Start the meeting, I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Alright, Mr. Mayor, can you please do a roll call attendance, please? Present, thank you. Welcome everyone, and we want to thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members, and we want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate and provide input can do so. This meeting is available live via the city's website by clicking on the video link under upcoming meetings on the homepage at cityofcarver.com. Or you can join remotely via Zoom conferencing services and provide input. Information related to joining the Zoom conferencing services can be found on the city's website or attached to the agenda for this meeting. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council, wait to be recognized by the mayor, be respectful, wait for your turn to speak, and don't speak over one another. Callers will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? We have a motion by Councilmember Henry. And a second by Councilmember McKnight, any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please? I Courtney Johnson. Alright, motion passes five zero. Alright, uh, community comment. This is, um, the time where the public can address the council for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if there is, um, anyone who wishes to make comments, now is the time to do so. Brent, we're not on a, a leg that we have to allow that minute for, or do we? Okay. So again, um, we'll allow for the, the delay, which means, um, giving us about a minute's time to breathe here, but this is the time during the agenda that if you, there isn't an item on the agenda that you want to discuss, if it's something completely outside of tonight's agenda, this is the time to speak. Alright, um, it has been a minute, so, um, there are no presentations or reports. Moving on to item six point one, public hearings, um, the twenty nineteen street improvement project supplemental assess- assessment. Josh Eckstein, go ahead.
Alright, David, I'm Mayor, I'm with the council. I will just give kind of a brief overview of the supplemental, uh, assessment of process here for this, the hearing tonight. Council, just gonna get back on the council order to contract the building, the already sounds, um, for reconstruction, reconstruction, twenty nineteen of the construction project on April first of nineteen. Construction of the project is now actually completed, you have to, this very first day, both the, um, poorly area and the reconstruction area, you have to be complete and, uh, both the rest restoration. Those are kind of last outstanding items for that project. Portion of the project costs, um, were assessed for adjacent properties. Private store, water utility connection work was required to be completed by each property owner with an integrity drive, drive, able with each property owner, um, associated their own quotes and hired their own contractors to work. Assessment actions were developed, um, helping with the costs, and each property owner was asked to select three different options. This process was completed in spring of twenty nineteen. Since, um, two property owners have requested a change to their selected assessment agreement option. Roll, like to roll an additional cost by the recent assessment. These properties located more far, driven by, I don't know, for show drive. Um, just to meet that, um, assessment agreement options. Assessments can be prepaid of interest for thirty days after the hearing tonight. Assessments will be certified on whether, if they have been elected. Taxes beginning from twenty twenty one, tax roll, any year thereafter, better than whatever fifty, back here, remaining balance, maybe only interest that you care. Assessment, not made at full, you may do tax payments from the bond for twenty years, and the bond issued for half, that, partial payments, and that a lot of, um, same terms there, there just be a lot of. Supplemental or revised assessment agreements, you have them prepared and they have them defined by each property owner, and a supplemental assessment role has been prepared. Next step, process, right, nineteen, and then adopt the supplemental assessment. An active option, roll, any assessments will be certified, I think county, right, thirty of, and they'll add it to, um, actual, one one, these two dollars. That's kind of, the review is gonna give, um, some anecdotes, probably, that, that they're ready to work, um, or their private connection. So that's coming out of the way. So that's fine. If there's any question, do we, is there any comment?
Okay. Thank you, Josh. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any public comments on the issue of the twenty nineteen street improvement project and the supplemental assessment role? And I'll once again allow a minute just for folks who may be watching online with the delay. Just a reminder, as we're waiting, um, after all public comments are received, the public hearing will be closed and no further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Alright, it has been a minute, um, I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Councilmember McKnight. Second by Councilmember Mock, any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please? I Courtney Johnson. Alright, motion passes five zero. Any comments from the council? Alright, with that, I would get a, entertain a, um, motion to adopt resolution one thirty three dash twenty, adopting supplemental assessment role.
Make the motion, state the whole thing.
What was that?
You stated the whole motion.
Alright, we've got a motion by Councilmember McKnight. And a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please? I Courtney Johnson. Alright, motion passes five zero. Moving on to item number seven, the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion by Councilmember Henry. And a second by Councilmember Mock, any further discussion? Although, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please? I Courtney Johnson. Alright, Brent, were you thinking of the work session items and unfinished business, or attach those to the end under communications? Okay. Alright, with that, um, no unfinished business, the first item under new business, we have nine point one, the CARES Act Admin Assistance Programs, Mr. Mayor. Yep.
Let us go over this, there's four acts. Where we said, there is funding allocation from the federal government, which is part of the, three hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred dollars, so I, in previous work sessions, the council had discussed, uh, the use of this, um, of a business emergency assistance program, and housing stability program. With an allocation of a hundred twenty thousand dollars on that, also, that's, that's, the business emergency assistance program, um, a partnership, whoever comes, a, uh, their theirs, next stage, and create a, administration, or, to that, your house, his office. Beneficiary payments, awarded applicants, um, up to ten thousand dollars, whole lot divisions, and based businesses, eligible, but for those eligible, uh, expenses, payroll, rent, parties payments, utilities, payments to suppliers, how they're not payable, business expenses. Also created, which is also your kind of housing stability program, also using safe funds, administer free of charge assistance, by the current cost, yet again, of this range, and, 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 from the five thousand dollars, like, for, for expenses, rent, security, public, facilities, and all of this, and, and, these programs, uh, proper, yes, the government, or, 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 assistance, perfect. You know, have, uh, different western communities, and so, and, and, that's, that's, that's significant, and, and, yes, uh, can see your kind of, or, or, planning for, on one hundred four dollars, you can see, you can do the expenses, kind of, for, for operation, it's operation, you have physical, so, and, and, you know, if you need a staff time, and, and, over here for, I, this assistance program, also, this, I did have to say, at least here, but, has been absolutely, kind of, set, because, because, what does shepherd this, to the process, going forward, here, some, 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 well, directly, main staff, maybe as well, waters and business, and, and, so, this, and, 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 maybe, programs to, as, for, also, want to attach, this kind of materials, have, over, have any other questions, or, 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 actually, this, this?
Alright, um, sorry, council, give me a second here, I'm trying to resize this window so I can see everybody's face. Alright, so, um, I'd like to go first on this one, um, I, first of all, um, Larry, I assume that you're comfortable with these agreements? Good, um, I don't have any comments for the, the business assistance program, but for the housing assistance programming, um, I would like to see the housing income requirements removed, um, I feel like that part of it makes it a little bit limiting, and when folks have to, as a part of the requirement, um, document their total income from twenty nineteen, I think that the issue with this whole COVID situation is that people could have been making money in twenty nineteen that were outside of the parameters of the one hundred and twenty, one hundred and fifteen percent of the area median income, but then if everything goes away, and they're struggling to pay bills, especially their mortgage or their rent, as of, you know, the middle of March, April, May, whatever it is, um, that just, it seems very, very, very narrowing to have that requirement in there. So that was, that was my one piece of feedback on this. And it's my understanding, Brent, that we can, we can do that, and we can make the rules and requirements for this. Okay. I'm comfortable doing that, because I think, um, one of the requirements are still that you're behind in your housing payments, and you have to document that and show that you're behind in that. So in my mind, that demonstrates the need.
Courtney, I agree with you on that, I brought that up, I believe, the last time we talked about it, um, I think, that, what you said is spot on, that just because you made a certain dollar amount last year, it's not mean you're making that certain dollar amount this year, and I don't think it should be so restrictive to say, well, you know, you made, made too much money before, so now, you shouldn't have any help. So, I agree with you on that one, and I'm happy to move forward with that change also.
Alright, thank you, Kristi. While we're on mute, do you have any other comments? No, okay, Lori, I see that you're off mute, do you have any comments, questions? No, okay, Glenn, oh, as you go for a drink, do you have any comments, questions, amendments? No, uh, Joy?
Yeah, 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 yeah. If the funds do not all get allocated, that money gets returned to the best, correct?
Gets returned to the city.
I thought we were, I thought we were, what the city should go with the money.
The recommended, I think, I think, I think.
They recommended, I agree, the recommended changes, I was, I'm, 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 issue all, of, allocation, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, correct?
Yeah, my concern, I want, I want, I, 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 okay, and then, and then, some, you, with all, with your, um, not, anything, your, your, so, yes, yeah, yeah, and then, you know, on, 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 back, we, 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 back, okay?
Alright, Joy, questions, comments?
So, I should not, we're taking out the income requirement, um, you know, if you look at this, it's five thousand dollars up to, let's assume, we have people who apply for the five thousand max, um, first come, first served, that's twenty-four people within our, it's pretty much, and even if it were half that, even if they are only applying for twenty-five hundred, it's only forty-eight people, um, you know, this is targeted at those who are making slightly less than a hundred and fifty percent of the median income of the area, um, I guess I would recommend that we keep the income requirement in, kind of, staffed, that, or the CDA monitor, to make sure that we're getting applicants, that we definitely get this money out into, we want to get it out into the community, and if we're not getting applicants, maybe we change that income requirement, start with what is.
I appreciate that feedback, Joy, I was coming from a place where, um, I am not sh- I guess, um, the assumption that I was working under was that I, I don't know how many folks from the city of Carver will get applying for these programs, and trying to open it up to make it more available to a, a wider pool of folks. I think it's also worth noting, too, that these are programs that are already taking place through the CDA, so, before and regardless of if we approve this tonight, every one of us as residents of Carver County, along with our, our friends in Chaska, and Chan, and Waconia, can apply for these programs and enter the, the broader pool of Carver County residents, um, so, um, I just. I would assume that that's what these are off of, Brent, you're shaking your head, yes? Alright. Thank you, Joy, any other comments, feedback? Go ahead, Lori.
So, I have a question, maybe, how to prepare to be able to, um, are we able to, after a couple of months, reevaluate and make changes on the requirement?
Yes, is, is this the timing, is, right? Need to spend dollars, or allocate dollars, right, right, so, like, oh, they show, here you remember what the, the application, that, I, that, that, so, um, um.
September four, I'm required, urgent?
September four, so, um, we can certainly come back, until, 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 if, if, if , um, how, how, we, um, whatever, pressure, or, 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 we'll provide a company, I'm not, I'm not sure, I haven't, for, I haven't, I, treat, that's, well, I, 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 just, for a, I'm sure, because, I think you can, you can plan for it, but I, 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 I don't really, I, this, Larry, I don't, that's, that's, that's.
Go ahead, Kristi.
I think, of Lori's question, I'm asking about, kind of, doing, like, I'll just call it tiered system, I'll be, if I had it wrong, or, if, if, but, I was going through and having stuff, kind of, re, and reevaluating, how we can go, and, to me, the time, frame, and the term run, just seems, seems over processed, to keep trying to change, and change, and change, I would rather see that if this money's available, have it open, again, I am for taking that, that requirement out, about, um, um, to, 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 thanks, it's not coming to your house, but I, I'm for taking it out, um, who am I to say, if you, if you, if you want to treatment, who am I to say, that you should get help for it, um, I don't know your monetary situation, whether you can make, uh, a large amount, small amount, I just think that, if we, I would rather see this money, be, to be going to, be well completed, rather than, might need to bring back to the city, or, send it back, send it back to the best, um, and, for me, quite a lot, Brent, they pay the bills directly, you don't hand them a check for anything, or the CDA doesn't hand them a, a check, and it goes directly to the bills, I mean, it's.
So, it's, 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 most, 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 that, that, doesn't, that, that, yeah.
Okay, so the money's going for where it's intended, and that is the most important to me, that as long as it's going to what it's intended to be for, then, I, again, I'm more than comfortable taking out that, um, that requirement, and, and just making bills to everybody, so.
Um, I would like to, see it, um, to stay as is, with, um, just in keeping the lines with what the, um, requirements are, and I don't know enough of this, like, the same federal, state, and now on our county, and, level, um, if I, and maybe this isn't a reason to, but, um, it looks like, for our area, um, a hundred and fifteen percent of the, the, area, so I don't know if this is the median income, or a hundred and fifteen percent of it, but, the information that I got from the CDA's question directly, says, for a household of four, a hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten, but like I said, I don't know if that's median income, or a hundred and fifteen percent of it, um.
Hey Lori, so a hundred and fifteen percent. Yeah, a hundred and nineteen is the area median income.
I think we're making that for, you know, to a hundred and fifteen percent of it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Uh, we have a slew of motions to run through. Number one, are you guys ready to move on to this portion? Can I get a motion to adopt? Thank you. Go Lori. Motion by Councilmember Sayer? I heard Kristi first, so, uh, second by Councilmember Mock, sorry, any further discussion? Alright, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please? I Courtney Johnson, motion passes five zero. Yep. Sure. Yes. Alright, we have a, a motion by Councilmember McKnight. And a second by Councilmember Henry, any further discussion? Alright, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please? I Courtney Johnson. Aye, Courtney Johnson. Motion passes five zero. All right, for the next one, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt and allocate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the housing stability program with the amendment that we remove the, um, under qualifications, item number two, um, the requirements for a household income. And a second. A motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Aye, Christina.
Aye, Lori, Mayor.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Um. Larry, do we need, are we good with the motion of entering into an agreement with the Carver County CDA for the next one, or does that need to be? Okay. Okay. Um, I will make that motion, that we enter into an agreement with the Carver County Community Development Agency for the administration of the housing stability program. A motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Aye, Christina.
Aye, Lori, Mayor.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, um, moving on to nine point two, the deaf child area sign ordinance zero nine twenty twenty. Mr. Mayor. Any questions, Council? Lynn's shaking his head, Joy's shaking his head, Lori's shaking her head. Kristy looks like she has something.
Um, it says they have to read the days before the three year. Do we track that, or how are we? Because I mean, so we'd like to, we want to make sure that the, let's say, the out of the area signs are there.
Okay, yeah, well, one, we'll try. There, you know, there's, let's say, a dramatic disapproval, so you've received a lot of requests. Yes, yeah. If you crack that, it'll, it's a, it'll, 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 it'll process. For our final, we, we, we have to have, uh, property order, that, original app, if you want your path for the, the site.
All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead, Lori.
We have a motion for, um, ordinance, uh, zero nine dash two zero two zero related to deaf child area.
We have a motion by Councilmember Sayer and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Aye, Christina.
Aye, Lori, Mayor.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes five zero. Um, oh, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to remind, but I know there's, uh, there are nice people present in this, this, this issue. Just want to call up Mr. Anderson if you want to, if there is a council. If not, that's fine, just want to be quiet a minute. We should, I don't know, like, offer a rest of the council. Are you okay, Nate? So we're, one side is planned to be placed just to, or if you use this fire hydrant, um, on. Second side.
Thank you. Thanks, Nate. Um, thank you, Brent, I appreciate that. Um, all right, before we get to communications, let's finish off where we left off with the twenty twenty-one general fund budget. Um, Lori, I think you were kind of up when we kind of quickly ended the work session. Do you have any other additional comments?
Um, no, I'm just gonna be back, um.
Okay, I'll let you gather your thoughts if you're okay, because I've got a list. Okay, okay, um.
Here's my, here's my thought, in, um, if, if maybe another work session or not, if we talk about, you know, we get a timeframe on when we'll know for the state LGA, um.
So Lori, that's something, we learned that, Lori, by the end of the session, so we'll know that before Memorial Day next year. Correct, yep.
Is that right? Okay.
Before Memorial Day, yes.
And then, when, when, uh, end of November, early December? Okay, all right, okay, um, got it. Um, and then, um, uh, it would be helpful to know, like, what direction or if you're just commenting, because the department heads are, um, and it makes sense, um, I'd like the optimism for moving ahead with training, you know, as if everything will, uh, lead back to, um, more of the, the travel. Um, and then, my last thing, just a thought on the, um, whether we're doing mileage reimbursement and/or, uh, car allowance. Um, just when that was first discussed and kind of settled in, things are a lot different, um, as far as, you know, less workshopping than they have now. So, just like, uh, just we really open minds about, you know, what our areas look at and maybe, um, could, um, cut the cost. Um, I really like that.
So Lori, I just want to, Brent, I'm gonna ask you to kind of explain, again, the process that you go through with department heads, but I just, Lori, I want to be really clear, like, this is the draft budget and this is the indication from department heads as far as what are they thinking for the next budget year. So maybe, Brent, if you kind of explain the process of getting together with everybody.
Budget process is very, I, uh, I'm, uh, shifting our, um, department, I don't, this is the one. He creates the first draft, he does frankly have a series of, um, conversations. He's, he's sure we set this, we just, um, off of, because we're not, have the staff, you know, have the, you know, staff where it's operated, et cetera. So it is, it's, um, or the collaboration, like, ability, right, uh, issue, but I think it's possible. I think it's a collaboration, I think, uh, if you're, if you have specific questions, sort of, if you're, if you're looking for, um, I'm not sure, I just, um, just, um, a budget lesson. If you're looking for this, maybe, feedback from, from Internet chat or, um, future, um, of that, like, what?
Um, yeah, I'm talking from, um, in air and big key and deep triple. Um, for the public works, I got a pretty clear that there needs to be more, you know, real ultra, uh, because it's hard to, like, pinpoint exactly what, um, has there been, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think there'd be, um, you're in a big, well, the, the, right? I think why, this is a good conversation, or, 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 I think that's probably, um, um. You're gonna tend to, like, in public works, in, um, public services and there, you know, you're gonna see more, well, college, bigger, you know, items, you know, doors, or whether it's a piece of equipment, or staff, or, I would say, the majority of the, the, uh, they, they have the, the operations, we can work by, uh, what it costs, or, like, attract the resources, insurance. Health, that's all. Because really, still, like, there's, you kind of, you have to send that to the chassis, it wasn't perfected. There's, uh, that's, uh, the, uh, budget, if we can get, okay, the, the, relative, so, yeah.
Okay, looking at what, like, that is, by your, for, there.
It is, it's, uh, big deal here, would you just mind maybe sharing your perspectives with, like, Lori and the balance and the, 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 the council on, on the budget?
Like Brent said, a lot of my budget is the daily stuff, so I think, uh, working with those busy time. So, whether that, I think, that lets them, yeah, look forward to the marriage, I think, it would be, I think, that's, like, exploring. And then, um, we have vehicles that we use rent specials, so there's, uh, our things that we have, um, gas, servicing vehicles, uh, yes. But, like, we're, a lot of, the, the things that we all take before that are really greater good, like, our IT services. My department absolutely pays a fair share for them, so, it is tough, because they, uh, always services, they have these, I think, items where
Chad, what is the timeline and the process for ordering a new plow truck? Can we tell you June first? Go ahead, you can order your plow truck and can you have it by the first snow? Okay. Okay. So maybe not an ideal timeline, but if the end result is the same. Go ahead, Brent. Got it. Got it. Great. So Brent, I'm sorry, the only other question that I had is you said that the, a while ago, you had mentioned that the fire department is going to kind of start saving money for the SCBA's, and I don't even know if I'm saying that right, but that was not put in the budget this year. Okay, got it. Hey Lori, Glenn, can I have you guys please turn on your cameras so we can see your beautiful faces as well as the members of the public who are tuning in? Brent, do you have the feedback from us that you need and direction? Not seeing any heads shaking or hands going up like they need to add two cents worth. Of course Glenn, I can't see you, so it's a little bit hard to tell. If you could turn on your camera, that'd be great. All right, with that Glenn, can you? Okay. Yep, there are chargers for these instances, but let's move forward with the 2020 community survey. Mr. Merrick, go ahead. Oh, we can if, whatever you want Brent, we can do. Sure. That's fine. Now talking about the recreation partnership update is Mr. Merrick.
There are possible use of facility reciprocity, so that's a community center, purely center town, of course, that's a methodology based on, it's a lot of residents that are, right? After the I deliver a discount, so that's the kinds of recent fifteen dollar discount, that's what gets us to the fifty six thousand. They also prepare a program reciprocity, so anytime someone signs up for the program, it means a discount, what that means, so fifty six thousand and nine thousand are kind of a blank culture, a number, staff time as related to other actuals, the programs, so it's very, um, the thing that we really had to kind of, uh, Chaska was, that's a, was a, like all kind of facilities, uh, for kind of future capital or utility facility, had some additional costs, kind of, so, definitely for that, for the, so, we kind of worked through that, I think one of the critical things is, Joy and I, I gave us a, your agreement so that we can again have that conversation with the city of Chaska, kind of make a sure of the program, so it uses, it's hard to see five years ahead, or at least not ahead behind, so, um, we, on our, maybe in a shorter term, of true enough, kind of their actual costs, understanding frankly that they're in a different financial situation than, I think both committed partners to each other, that this would be, the next step would be for us to kind of compare, I think we mentioned, also considered, but before we kind of get that far, I guess, check in with the council and see if this is what you're looking for, or kind of tentative support, as if we're way off, you know, get that feedback, you know, that, uh, Chaska's, not the ones.
All right. Just a comment, Brent had shared kind of the earlier drafts and he did some really good negotiating work with the city of Chaska to bring this down and make it a little bit more reasonable and easier to understand. So with that, any questions, comments, directions for Mr. Merrick? Go ahead Lori.
One more question, is that over, reciprocity to you, or is that something that we've been doing already?
Good question, council member Sarah, so, kind of what I would probably have right now is kind of the all in number, so, uh, charge fifty one, two fifty for facilities and programs, um, probably three, probably under eight, eight to that, well, there's also kind of like current, uh, man can point that, however resident, there's always, programs, there's always also, revenue for Chaska, but at the end of the day, I think showing these numbers was, is a, is a representation of these costs, the cost, and Peter Point in general, it's, it's a different model, all of it, which is kind of, might be.
Any other questions, comments? Joy, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the negotiating here, and I appreciate the cost of the Chaskers in. I also understand that you want to, just, carver residents, participating in some way, um, with these recreational programs, so I think it's important to try to figure out how to support, so I appreciate the efforts to come to me to compromise for something that is a little bit more reasonable for us to pay, but also addresses some of Chasker's concerns. So I, I want, I want us to continue to support this partnership, so I appreciate the efforts to make it as best we can.
Thank you Joy. Christie, any comments? No? Glenn?
Yes. We, when we started the program, I told, um, I told the, we had some managers who all, um, have, um, that, that sort of, they're, they're all, um, the cost that they associate with, we negotiate, so, um, remember that was more, it was where it's at, um, I think of course, you'll need the part, so, I went, I went through the program, um, and found, and tied our own, okay, and about, now at least, one half, I, um, um, I really, like, um, all the, um, this, um.
Thank you Glenn. Yeah, and Brent, I think, I think this is good, I think that the residents of Carver see value in it, and I think it's, it's a benefit, you know, when we were looking at buying our house here ten and a half years ago, there, it was right, well, I think it was right before the initial program was going to be eliminated, and when we got here and realized that there wasn't that reciprocity and there wasn't that program anymore, it was a disappointment, so knowing that we have it back and that we're continuing that relationship, it's, it's good and I'm completely in favor of it. Are you clear with the direction?
Also, we see this summary.
Yes, sorry, I had to toggle the Brady Bunch view away.
So, kind of segue into the community survey, we worked with, like, a whole, it was a critical part of the twenty twenty budget, the city council strategic and the community survey, and so, we really wanted to have a, you know, professional, navigate, do a brief summary, the residents have, they, 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 they look at, well, survey, obviously it's, since it's such a critical piece of information, we, we, residents, I think that's, at this point, it gets feedback, because messaging pieces of the council is interesting, adjusting for, because I need to, this, like, uh, official, so, kind of too many items that are shown here are quality of life, for, personal recreation facilities, uh, uh, also those tapable, smaller, this is, getting their current direction, capability to, uh, southern small town, more in-depth data, city service ratings, category, staff rating, or obviously this is a very, very high level, on working, certainly, if there was a snapshot, if you, you know, control the survey results, things that I can discuss with, there's obviously, where they kind of, kind of teed up conversations, trying to also, with, with, the whole is here that the, 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 all they feel, this, this is, um, things, with, with all that I've been at, so there's any comments for just?
I think it looks good. Yeah. Joy is nodding. Christie, Lori, comments? Nothing from Christie.
I have a, um, I'm, I'm coming, it's, it's kind of, Texas, I, it's really, really, rate is really high and good, so, um, all other cities are, are, um, like, I don't know, um, what's?
What?
Sorry. So what's that show that dark moves only there for, um, kind of going left to right to right, and I think we definitely, um, have plans for that, um, so Paulie?
Hey Lori. Lori, if I may interrupt, I think Brent's just seeking feedback on kind of this document that'll be included in the, in the utility bill.
Okay. So my last thing is, um, maybe the answer, what we're doing for any of the things, or maybe in a future vacation, such as, that store water runoff grid is, um, you know, maybe as a follow-up, um, what we're doing for those areas, that grid is only there slash for.
That's what, yes, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add, it's, right, I, I, I see that actually, right after, uh, working with residents, sometimes, sometimes, there are various circumstances, as you can imagine, a late bill or a high, high use bill, are, those aren't always pleasant conversations, and Brent, after, I think, really well, for the, uh, I was going to, the call, well, I think the, our stories are a reflection of, of kind of a care and, of a, of a, of a, of a, of a, of a, of a.
Thanks for sharing that Brent, kudos to, to Brenda. Let's see, from, um, let's see, let's do council, let's blend council communications and requests all in one. So Joy, would you like to go first?
Sure, I don't have any, uh, communication, but I do have a request, you know, while we're sitting here talking about the community survey, um, I'd like to see our council kind of commit to redoing this kind of survey, um, every so many years, I don't know if it's three or five, um, I think, a company had a couple recommendations for us, but to commit to putting that in our budgets in the future, um, just so that we can, uh, measure improvements or detactions from where we are at right now, um, I think that would be really helpful, not sure how'd I get that kind of commitment from our, um, council, but I wanted to ask for it, um, so.
Thank you Joy. Okay. Lori?
Um, we had a, sorry, I'm just calling as that, um, uh, we had a meeting Monday, uh, so, I did have to group together, we didn't call, uh, otherwise, no other.
All right, thanks Lori. Christie?
Sure, we had a HDC meeting, um, we had a couple different things on there, one of what's exciting, we have a, uh, assessment of businesses, uh, in downtown Carver, so they came to get their, uh, most HDC, and, um, what was just most recently, the art studio, so, still on those streets, I'm looking forward to having a business opening down here, uh, I'm sure everyone is aware, but I'll say it again, that Stephen's canceled, so we're all having our, uh, Stephen's activities, um, we are still going to be having Citywide Garage sale, uh, we have, as this is today, there are not too many addresses or anything like that, because in the weekend, it's, it's having garage sale, and at one, uh, it's mostly, that, and then, um, we'll be hosting a car show, a Carver car show, it's not, because we don't have Stephen's this year, um, the Carver car show on Saturdays and Tuesdays, so just to be heads up, that will be taking, it's, um, Broadway, which is the major acre of town, so that'll be, um, morning, so, it's only till one o'clock, uh, or, there's Chad here and Brent, they're going to be, uh, holding the, uh, holes, things like that, which is going to be more vaulted, every other stalls, so we can try to grab a specific distance, see, from that, so, um, we are, maybe have a couple of trucks down by, and again, it goes from ten to one, it's just, back to the morning, and then.
All right. Glenn?
Uh, I have a final question, uh, again, fully, uh, over the nav, I got off.
All right, thanks Glenn. For me, just, um, thank you to the election judges last week, I was down here for a walk, um, during kind of what appeared to be prime time, and people were lined up outside the doors and everybody looked really busy, and I, I know with kind of all the new social norms and social distancing, that it was an election, um, like none other that we've ever seen, so thank you very much, um, to the, the volunteers and the staff members who helped out with that to make everything, um, work really well. Speaking of elections, kind of peripherally, um, both Christie and Joy are going to be running uncontested this fall, and because of that, I think that that gives us an opportunity to get a jumpstart on our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two strategic planning, which is something that I would very much like to do, since we kind of know what council's going to look like for the next two years, um, I think that I would really, really like to hit the ground running, um, and get us together, um, as much as together looks like these days, um, before the end of the year, if we can, so that we can work on our, our strategic direction, um, how we can work together to advocate for the city of Carver and what we want to get done in the next two years. So, um, I just wanted to float that, um, in front of council to kind of get everybody's collective gears turning, to figure out, um, you know, what our goals are, what we want to do, if this is something that we do want to do earlier, which I certainly hope, um, everyone is excited about doing sooner rather than later, um, but just wanted to throw that out, um, and then, um, let's see, just looking at my list, I think that's it on my list, but Joy, I absolutely agree with you about, um, the community survey, I think, you know, and looking at it, I think generally our, our results were pretty good, but that was the intention of this first one, was that we had a benchmark, so that we could tell where we're at in a handful of years and whatever that looks like, um, but to continue to have councils do that at hopefully a somewhat regular pace, so that we can kind of check in on our, our performance report, if you will. Um, with that, Mr. Merrick, how about a city manager's update?
Well, um, something that kind of keep your eye on, and I share this, I've written it out on the page, but, uh, recently, I'm talking, or, uh, was not, maybe, some, actual field project, called, I'm, uh, Janes, uh, Janes, is it Janes? Better, less, uh, recover the project, uh, five hundred thousand, Tony Ford was, I just scroll, personally, just, I don't know, five years, related to that, and, uh, I cared about that process with the Tony ministry, empty, and the years that Tony, considering about, some sort of policy, you know, to finance, for infrastructure, so, um, so I, uh, made a request, we kind of shared the facility interest, you know, financing, facilities portion, kind of, project, which is approximately two million dollars on those same terms, which we're going to say, having, a, 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 a project, of course, on, on, this, and so on, and so, it sounds like, uh, Tony staff was working on the draft policy, or, I should kind of teed up that conversation with the commissioner, you know, so I just wanted to kind of give that to council, create armor, you know, as with most things, I think, maybe sort of that, with, but if, if the Tony board started hearing from all the cities, like, you know, about it, or, or, interest, uh, or, if, if, it will, make, I'm guessing that, that the program, I think, may, but in any event, I think it's a significant policy issue, right, so, questions, kind of, related to that?
None here.
And then, uh, finally, we, council discussed this briefly, extra capacity. First, uh, first, I, 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 primarily, I should, that, it's, kind of self, our, 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 just, uh, geography, fences, et cetera, that are in that area, so, Dan and Aaron are going to be kind of working the kind of, kind of, kind of, kind of, get a, get a, get a, get a, where we at, and then, that'll be, kind of, I believe it, I, 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 I,